Good evening, everybody. This is Tim Terranova, Superintendent, proud Superintendent of the Victor Central School District. We are currently going into our second live town hall. We did this last week on Wednesday and felt like it was a good idea to continue to do this moving forward on a weekly basis to try to be as transparent with the community as possible around what's going on in the Victor Central School District. Hope you had a great day today. I know it is very trying, the times out there right now. In fact, right before this, I was on the national news, looking at the national news and looking at some of our local news, and it's really gut-wrenching to hear everything going on in society right now with this coronavirus. So, you know, it's that old, age-old concept of what can you control versus what you can't control. So for the next 45 minutes to an hour, we're going to try to talk about things we can control and also be as transparent with you about things that we don't have answers to. So in terms of the setup, can talk a minute just about our overarching objectives for tonight, which are the same as last week. Then I'm going to give you some updates from what we've learned the last couple of days. Then I'm going to go through our thought exchange questions and try to answer as many of those as possible. At the same time, hopefully, you're going to be asking some questions live via Facebook Live. So as I answer some of the thought exchange questions from the last two days, I'll also go to some of the live messages and live questions and try to answer as many of those as I can as well. And then after that, do a quick wrap-up. And again, this should be about 45 minutes to an hour. So in terms of our four objectives for tonight, again, the same as last week. Number one is it's about community, right? We use our community, which is incredible in the Victor Central School District across Victor and Farmington, all our areas that are included in this great district, making sure we take community to snuff out isolation and the feeling of being isolated in such a unique time period. So using us, using all of us together to really talk about things, be transparent about things, listen to your concerns, and then make sure we understand that we are a community, no matter whether we need to be six feet or farther apart or whether we're going to be together at some point, which will happen. We are a community, and that is the strongest piece to this, to this great district. So it's about continuing to form community during this time. It's always about the kids, right? It's always focused on our students. You know, whether you're a kindergartner going through this district for one of the first times or a senior going through, which is a really unique, unique year for you, it's about you, the kids. So remember a couple reminders for you, all the students out there, and you've heard it a thousand times. One is be safe, right? Social distancing. Try not to congregate. Wash your hands under soap and water for 20 seconds. Do the little things because those are the things that are going to allow us to get back together sooner. And most importantly, keep everybody safe. So that's really important. Also, as you're going through this, try to learn from people, whether it's adults or kids, who are really trying to manage this very successfully, right? Make sure you try to have a routine. Keep that routine going, especially during Monday through Friday. Set goals, which is, which is really, really important. You know, whether, again, whether you're a third grader and you have goals tied to your family as well as your schoolwork, or whether you're a junior or senior in high school, make sure you set goals and try to reach those goals and keep them short and specific, day-to-day goals as opposed to weekly goals. And then maintain your physical and mental health, right? Those are two of the most important things we could possibly have, probably the two most important things. So not only exercise when you can and where it's appropriate, you know, and safely, but also keep an eye on your own mental health. Keep an eye on your friends, right? Reach out to each other if you need it. Make sure you're supporting one another because mental health and physical health is critical right now. And, you know, we're going to learn more from you than you'll ever learn from us in terms of like the kids of this. So keep an eye on each other. Make sure to try to connect via social media and stay healthy, set goals, and continue to kind of work towards a day-to-day focus as we move through this thing. So second goal is about the kids. We'll talk more about that as we go through to tonight. Always, in my weekly updates like this, I will always make sure that we give thanks to the people who are doing so many great things for us. You know, from our maintenance to our cleaners, the people who are on the site doing the tough work still because they're considered essential and are essential to our well-being, to our mechanics, to our transportation workers, whether it's drivers or people who are cleaning the buses, to our food service workers who are constantly loading the buses and serving food to our community every Monday and Wednesday, moving forward while we're, while school is closed, to all our secretaries and the district office staff that I see come in over and over again, hopefully in small numbers because we know we're trying to work from home as much as possible, but our district office staff, our mail carriers. Shout-out to Sheila and Lisa for all the staff that received checks yesterday and in the last couple of days. Sheila and Lisa did that, and they did it from home for the most part, which is amazing. Shout-out to them and their work. And everybody, of course, that is at home right now, for good reason. Most of you, if not almost all of you, should be staying at home and getting work done, supporting our kids through distance learning and administrators, supporting our teachers. Thank you very much for everything you're doing. And I know I probably missed somebody, but again, that thank you goes to everyone out there for maintaining that community and keeping us together. And then the last objective, again, that third objective is always going to be a thank you, is just to focus on communication. I'm going to try to be as transparent with you as possible. Again, I'm going to answer as many questions as I can, give you as many updates. There's many things I don't have the answer to, but, you know, we'll be, again, upfront about that. Try to explain it a little bit, and then as soon as we do get answers, get you those answers that are reliable, honest, and hopefully make a difference for you. So continue our communication, our give and take. Again, please type in your questions. If I don't get to all your questions tonight, we will answer your questions in the next couple of days because this will be posted to Facebook after today. So just keep them coming in and hopefully, again, you're, you're listening to us tonight. So just a couple of updates for you. The state of spring break and when we're in school and when we're not in school. So let me just explain something. The governor has mandated that over spring break, which is next week, we are required to give virtual instruction, distance learning to our families and our students. We're also needed to continue to give food out to our students, especially our students in need on Mondays and Wednesdays. And so that's going to continue next week, both the distance learning as well as our food distribution. Now, it'll be very similar to this week, might be a little bit less. We understand that as families that you, you also need your family time, and we certainly understand that our staff and our teachers need your family time too. But this is a mandate from the governor and from the state of New York, so we will provide that, that connection and that learning to you next week. In addition to that, now, this is where it gets interesting. The governor has told us, right, that we are out of school until at least April 15th. The president has recommended that we practice social distancing for the next 30 days, which would be through April 30th. What that means is we're out at least until April 15th and most likely past that. I can't guarantee that because ultimately, our governor has to make that decision, and he has decided to do that, I believe, in about two-week increments. And that's important because when the governor decides that schools need to be closed, we preserve our state aid and hold harmless the 180-day rule that we have in terms of schooling. So that's why we typically wait for the governor to make those decisions. But we are practicing social distancing. We're officially out till April 15th. I think there's a strong likelihood we're going to be out past then, although I don't know how long. As soon as we hear from the state around that, we will let you know. And going back to the first point, we will be providing instruction and work and communication to you during next week, which is spring break. Another update, grading. I know we've received many questions around grading moving forward. Our staff and leadership have done a great job trying to iron this out. You're going to hear more about it as we move through the next couple of days. It primarily affects grades seven through 12. And what's occurring right now is that we've decided to officially end the third quarter as of March 13th. And I don't know if you recall that, but that was a Friday, and it was actually a superintendent's conference day. So our kids, our kids' last day was actually March 12th on Thursday. So we're going to grade your children's work all the way up through March 13th. Any work that was handed in March 12th or March 13th, and for some reason, your kids handed some work in that Friday, that will be graded. We will not penalize your children for any work that was missed or late after that. So you may have, your kid, your child may have some work that wasn't completed as of March 13th. That will not be used against your child or be as a penalty towards your child because obviously, situation changed, your kids weren't able to come to school, so there was a conflict in terms of how to hand that work in. Also, because of the fact that many of our kids hand in work before the marking period officially ends, we are not having any failing third-quarter grades for seven-through-12 students this particular year. So the third quarter, the lowest grade will be a 65. We will grade, however, specifically with all the work that comes in, so your child certainly can have a higher grade than 65, but the lowest grade we're going to give is 65 because of the conflicting challenges of kids trying to do makeup work, which typically happens. Then, in terms of the fourth quarter, we're going to make some decisions on how we're going to grade that, basically directly related to if and when we come back to school. So if we come back to school the end of April or early May, then we may decide at that point how to grade the fourth quarter, what it would look like in abbreviated fashion. If we come back later than that, it may end up being some type of pass or incomplete grade that we'd have to really talk about and explain to you so that you know exactly what that means. But that has not been decided yet because we don't know when we're coming back. So that's grading. Also, for high school students, APs are still on, as you know. That's important. They're going to be online, and so you should have, be receiving specific information from your child's teacher and principal regarding that. The IB program has, the tests have been canceled. I know there's some questions around, especially our seniors in the IB program. We're going to do whatever it takes to support you getting your IB diploma. I believe, you know, right now, we believe strongly that the IB program is going to allow that to happen. In fact, it would be pretty detrimental if they didn't, as long as you're in good standing in that program. We'll have some official word on that because we do have to rely on IB to make that final decision, but we've been hearing good things about that, and we know that the tests have been canceled. Keep communicating with your child's, with your teacher, especially seniors who really deserve that IB diploma, and but we're very hopeful that you would be held, held harmless in terms of any concerns because they canceled the IB exams this year. Regents, no word yet. Wish I had more information for you, but we don't have any information on whether regents are going to be canceled or not. Again, I think a lot depends on when we come back, although hopefully, with everything going on, we'd hear pretty soon what they're going to do with that. Again, for students, all these students who are attempting to get regents diplomas as well as regents with advanced designation, we will do whatever it takes not to hold you, have any negative effects or impacts from this particular situation on that. If you're in good standing in your regents courses and you're taking enough courses to earn that, especially for your seniors right now, that regents with advanced designation, that we will make a push to make sure you get that regents with advanced designation diploma. And again, we're working with the state on that. We'll have more information, but again, we really need to make sure you're supported in that. So major events. I do have to tell you this one for our high school students. So our junior prom, I believe, is towards the, I know it's the end of April. Can't remember whether it's April 25th or April 23rd. Unfortunately, because of that particular date, and this is just the junior prom, we're going to need to cancel the junior prom for this year because it falls in that 30-day realm that the president said we must practice, for good reason, social distancing. However, the other events slated for the high school that occur in May and June are not canceled at this time. I don't know if we will have to cancel them or not. I wish I could tell you more, but as I told you last week, we're going to hold out as long as possible around canceling any major events that occur in May and June until we have to and it's necessary for safety. But right now, the junior prom is canceled. You're going to hear more information on that from Mr. Siesto, and that is because the junior prom is slated for April. Trip refunds, I do want to spend a minute on that. I know many of you are disappointed that you've, weren't able to go on some trips either to various cities in the United States or out of the country. So we are actually using the help of our attorney to take a look at all the paperwork from the different companies that we're working with around these trips. We hope for the best in terms of their ability to be fair around refunds, which we believe you should honestly get fully refunded. That's my belief and hope. I can't guarantee that, but we are helping or having our attorney look at things and make sure that our attorney is checking off everything he or she can to get you as much of the refund as possible, if not 100%, which is really what we want. So I have had some questions about that. We're still working through that. We hope to have some answers in the next week or two to make sure that people are refunded fairly on the trips that they unfortunately lost the opportunity to go on because of the coronavirus. And just before I go into some of the questions on Thought Exchange, just know that the concept that we've been doing last week and this week and moving forward every week is, you know, we open up some general questions for you on a Monday, give you a couple of days to reflect on those questions and give us some great input around them, and then we take a look at those answers. The way Thought Exchange works is it basically takes the questions and takes people's answers, and then when more and more people have similar answers, it ranks those answers in those questions, which become the ones that are most prevalent. It doesn't mean we dismiss questions that are answered by one or two people or thoughts that are put down by one or two people. However, I try to focus in this limited time on the, and the questions and answers that most people weighed in on. And then, as I said earlier, we'll take a look at some of these questions. I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability, and then go into some live questions right on Facebook Live as much as I can. So I love the collaboration, love the input. Let's start with some of the, let me take a quick look at some of the, any questions from Facebook Live. Is it likely the junior prom will be canceled? Yes. Unfortunately, and again, I'm very sorry for all of you around tailoring dresses and buying things for the junior prom. Hopefully, companies will be understanding. I really hope that, but the junior prom is now canceled because of its April date. Let's just see here. I'm going to get to some of these questions actually right now because a lot of them revolve around distance learning. So let's see. Let me go into some of these questions, and I'll continue to look, look at these questions. Because one, because actually, many on here are about distance learning. So here's the first two major question there, or major points that people brought up on our Thought Exchange. Number one was virtual classroom and Zoom and video concepts. I'll read you some of the comments. Virtual classroom, is there a possibility to teach and help kids connect with their class again? Zoom video, can technology be used so teachers can actually teach kids? Can we borrow school equipment to make that happen? Live interaction with teachers and classmates would be beneficial. More live or recorded video sessions would be helpful. Seeing videos of their teachers and friends has been really helpful, lessens the feelings of isolation and reminds us we are all in this together. We'd be grateful for more interactive virtual classrooms or video lessons from teachers. I would love to see more Zoom meetings between teachers and students. My child does not fully get what is going on, and is nervous about what he hears on the news, so helpful if he could see his teachers and classmates. We have to get the students connected exclamation point. We cannot continue to isolate them with no interaction from teachers and friends. Other schools are doing so. Also tied to this particular point, now that classwork is expanding past break, what is the plan for new material? We'd like to see my child's teacher teaching new material via video. Incremental learning is very important. Couple more questions tied to this point. Subject areas should not be assigning work for five days a week or seven days like some teachers. Families are overextended, not enough devices at home. Kids need a break since the governor has made schools cancel spring break. Teachers should only assign one assignment that week. Teachers and kids have been working this closure, and the closure is not a vacation. So let me speak to a couple of points around teaching via video as well as other devices and new learning. So let's start, I guess we'll do it kind of incrementally from the elementary level up. So at our early childhood school and primary school, a couple of things have been going on. We've been primarily focused on review and primarily focused on, you know, getting assignments to you to do at home and struggling, honestly, to try to, to bring in live video just to connect with the kids and the teacher because it can be challenging, for example, to try to get 20 kindergartners on Zoom with the teacher when parents are quite busy and have significant responsibilities and so do the teachers. So what's happening though, as we move through this week and spring break, which we will provide work for, our teachers and staff and leadership are doing a phenomenal job working out some of these challenges. And our hope is that the week after break, A, we're going to start at the early childhood school as well as a primary school to provide some more new learning. And if you think about, especially kindergarten, first and second grade, that new learning primarily is reading, writing, and mathematics when it comes to academic subjects, and also trying to interweave science and social studies concepts along with our courses like phys ed, art, and music. But the main focus in terms of content is reading, writing, and mathematics. So you're going to start to get new materials for those areas and even some materials related to science and social studies. We're also working on ways to get connections between your child's teacher and the class that your child's in. So whether it's one time a week or a couple of times a week, getting that social interaction wouldn't necessarily be used for teaching, but more for personal communication between our kids and the teacher so they get to see each other, they get to talk to each other, they get to say hello, they get to share some things that are going on in their lives. Again, it might be only as simple as 10 to 15 minutes, but we're going to try to make that happen starting the week we get back, well, I'll say it this way, the week after spring break, when we normally would be back, which I think we won't be, we're going to build in some of that, that personal connection with classes, and that's going to be really focused, it's going to have to be a lot of work done and collaboration between parents, guardians, and teachers because we don't want five-year-olds trying to, you know, use Zoom by themselves. It's not going to work. So there's going to have to be some significant adult collaboration in that as with our younger kids. And again, it's going to be more for personal relationships and connections than teaching, but we are going to provide more new teaching. It's a similar model at the four, six level, although as the kids get older, fourth, fifth, and six, I know that we're trying to do a little bit more with some taped lessons as well as video, different forms of video to try to get lessons across. We're also working very hard and will continue to increase the new learning that occurs, not just in English and math, but in social studies and science as well, to the best of our abilities. Let me remind everybody, as you know better than I do, we've got two groups of people, and some are actually in both groups. So we've got parents and guardians at home who are challenged significantly because you've got kids you're trying to supervise and be homeschooling them, basically, while you're trying to manage with the uncertain financial situation and your own jobs. We have teachers doing the same thing with their own families, trying to manage their situations. Everybody's looking after their elders and grandparents and in-laws. So, and some of our teachers are community members, so they're going across both groups. So it's not going to be the same as six hours of school with our kids in front of us. It never will be in this setting. However, we're going to continue to work at incrementally, typically on a two-week schedule, to try to do whatever we can to do three things, as I've reminded people over and over again. Number one, most important, continue to build those personal connections and have those opportunities for your kids to interact with their teachers, who they love so much. Do some new learning on top of review, and then try to figure out ways to allow for our teachers to give your kids feedback as much as they can, as efficiently as they can on some of that new learning that's occurring. At the secondary level, junior high and high school, a lot of that is occurring. Like I said last week, we're typically somewhere between 80% review, 20% new learning, and 75% review and 25% new learning. That's going to continue with some of the new learning ratcheted up a bit after April break. We're going to continue to experiment with both live incremental teaching as well as taped video lessons at the secondary level. And a lot of it depends, and it's actually a great message from, I don't know if I have it in front of me, one of our teachers today. We as teachers should be seeking out ways to connect with our kids on a personal level, and it's critical, and video is great for some, but video's not necessarily the universal answer, in my opinion, just like in the classroom. Each teacher is going to need to find their way and do what's best. In some cases, that might not be a 40-minute video lesson. It might be comments on individual assignments. It might be a five-minute video excerpt. It also might be different platforms for online discussion. So that's what our secondary teachers are really focused on, and we're going to try to give them really targeted and efficient professional development over the next couple of weeks so they can do that. Not going to throw 15 things at them because that's not going to work. One or two ways to try to improve and continue to work on that communication and that teaching would be really, really critical to, to support our teachers. So that really gets into where we're moving, and again, I would take it on two-week increments. We do anticipate, and I can't speak for him, but we do anticipate the governor will keep us out after April 15th, depending on how long that is. We look at it from a two-week standpoint until the beginning of May and really try to practice both the new content that is so important as well as that personnel, personal relationship and connections that I know is occurring significantly at the secondary level and will continue to expand, and certainly will start to occur at the K6 level, even at the, at the youngest levels through some incredible work that I know our staff and leadership are doing. So third point here, structures and routines are important. It gives them something to rely on when everything else is so uncertain. See if there's another. Having a daily schedule that resembles something close to what they had when school was in session has been important, making sure there is time for physical activity as well as seated learning. For our family, consistency and routines has been beneficial. The kids know their schedule and know what is expected of them. Took us the first two weeks to get used to the distance learning and how teachers were doing things. The kids are used to everything now. So that's a great reminder for all of us, as I mentioned, you know, at the beginning around our kids, routine is everything. Time management. I was lucky enough to spend some time on a Zoom meeting with some of our great student athletes a couple of days ago, actually yesterday, through Mr. Wamer, our director of athletics, who's doing a great job with the Zoom meetings with our, with our kids on a regular basis. And the thing that our kids said that was most challenging for them is time management. And these are high school students who are, you know, pretty, pretty successful young adults. So I can't imagine what it's like, you know, for a six, seven, and eight-year-old with our adult support to try to manage that time. So that's something to continue for all of us to work on. We cannot at this time create an exact schedule that your child had in school because of the unique situations that we're in, and that is all, you know, home learning at this point. But we can work together as teachers, staff, and parents and guardians to try to make sure, you know, your kids have some type of routine and regular schedule as far, as far as when they do work, when they do exercise, when they have family time. Those are things that are really important, and hearing that from the public through this Thought Exchange is important to, to reflect on as well. Let's look at some more questions that are coming up now. I appreciate all of them, and again, the ones, the ones that I don't get to, we'll try to get to as many over the next few days. As a parent who has to work full-time at home and a spouse who is in healthcare working out of the house, it is not right to have the teaching burden put on the parents. More Zoom teaching needs to occur from the teachers. Point taken, which is what we're going to definitely attempt to do. Zoom sessions can be recorded, uploaded, and viewed at a more convenient time. That's a great point. If Zoom live video is too difficult, even videotaped lessons would be helpful to parents who are trying to work full-time at home and keep their child on task. And as I said, you know, again, the challenge with our youngest kids is to try to do Zoom with parent support because again, when you're five years old, it's challenging to do that. And if a teacher's trying to have 20 of her students on Zoom at the same time, that can be quite challenging, but we are going to try to do that for personal connections. And then, like I said, especially as we move up through the grades, we're going to do more and more consistency around both taped lessons and some live lessons. consistency around both taped lessons and some live lessons that are appropriate for our teachers. And there's, like I said, our teachers are working hard with our teacher leaders to really find the best tools that they can use and manage appropriately because they also have time constraints. There are online lab simulations that may be an option for regents classes that need additional lab minutes. There has been no direction from New York State Ed regarding lab minutes. Exactly correct. I appreciate that comment. Have you already discussed grading? Yes. As I mentioned earlier, grading at the 712 level, we are going to have the kids grade the work that was handed in as of March 13th. They're not going to be penalized for late work and for the third quarter only, for the third quarter this year, the lowest grade we're going to have is a 65 for 712 students. And we're going to move forward and make some decisions on fourth quarter grading, making sure not to, making sure to hold harmless anybody in these situations. K6 is much more, is different. They've already had the two trimester grades. There's a third trimester that is going on now and we really want our parents and our staff and our kids to focus more on the work they're doing and then feedback on that work rather than a standards-based grade of one, two, three or four. I don't see that occurring for the third trimester because we're not in school right now. But we are expecting kids to do work, appropriate work and, and obviously feedback from the teacher around that work. So that's the piece around grading. Has Google Hangout been considered? Most of our older children are familiar with Google and that's might work well for smaller class meetings. I know some teachers are actually using that. That's a great point. Let me just go through a couple more that go to some more thought exchange question. Leadership and teachers are generally doing a great job and my kids have adjusted. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Teachers need to mimic virtual teaching. And some more information around grading. Here's an example of a parent. I've been alternating one week Spanish, one week French. There are tons of mini lesson ideas on YouTube. I'd start with simple phrases, family members, colors, days of the week, et cetera. And then last one I'll read here and then I'll go back to thought exchange. Is there a way for a student to reach out to their teachers to improve their grade? Yes, our teachers are all working hard to connect with their students. So you could email your teacher, you could, I mean, many of the teachers are taking phone calls around that. You can't for some reason get ahold of your teacher, email your school counselor or your child's principal. And you can have that conversation around that like you would have as if you were in school. I can't promise your grade is going to be improved, but certainly that conversation is warranted. Some more questions from thought exchange. One was a need for more technology and tablets in school. So let me, let me read you a couple of those questions actually, because they're excellent. Each student needs a tablet for prolonged closure of school. Parents are getting overloaded with materials daily and weekly, while homeschooling parents need their computers. And a lot of the time, kids need one in addition to that. I think there was another question on this. When surveyed about the need for technology, I said no because we had one computer. However, with multiple kids in school, it's very difficult. There are so many wonderful resources offered online for each child. So let me speak to you about that. We appreciate the Chromebooks that were passed out to many of you who, who, and who said that they didn't have the technology at home. There is a bit of a challenge right now in terms of being able to give Chromebooks to every student. We don't have enough Chromebooks for every student in our district. Our district at this moment, this period of time is not set up for one-to-one technology integration as many other districts are. That is something, long-term, as we work into strategic planning, A, we're going to want your input on. And B, we're going to want to pursue as we move through, again, a strategic plan moving into next year and getting your constituents' input on that because we do believe in the 21st century, we should be focused on the implementation of effective one-to-one technology. For the short term, but that's also not only a strategic planning issue, it's also a budgetary issue. And you know our situation financially that we're going to continue to talk about, not so much tonight, but as we move forward through the next month or so. But the reality is that's going to take time. So currently we do have some Chromebooks, but not enough for everybody. So one of the things that our teachers and leadership staff are going to do in the next week to two weeks is really, because we understand, I mean, you have, might have one computer at home, maybe two computers. You might have four or five people in the house and everybody needs them. It's, it's intense. So we are going to try to problem solve around that, but I can't guarantee a great answer to that. We do have some more Chromebooks out there and there may be an equitable, equitable way to distribute some of them. That's something that we're going to have to talk about and plan over the next two weeks. But long-term, we really need to look at the, the need to be a one-to-one school like many of our counterparts are and how to strategically plan that and deal with it financially. Another question, actually this is, this was from last time. I just want to talk about this for a second. Consider having an online information site for parents, whether that's material overview, short check-in times with teachers on their students. So that's a great idea. That's another idea that I don't have a specific answer for you on, but it's something that we're going to consider. Can we create, especially if we're out longer than the end of April and into May? How do we create sites for parents to access where you could get materials, look at them if you had the time? Where you could connect, you know, with each other potentially to really problem solve. And I know many of you are doing that now, but that's a great idea. It's something we're not going to forget about. The other piece to this, and this was from last time as well, we'd love to have more student interaction. So I'm seriously thinking of trying to do a Facebook Live, just, I'm not sure how we're going to do that, but that's something where we'd love to involve kids through Victor Central School District, just to have a half an hour to an hour where really we get your input on how things are going. And we can look at some other ways to do that through technology, especially if we go out longer than the end of April. So those are great concepts that we want to explore. CSE meetings, ELL programs for students, for students as well as 504s. So as you know, you know, we, we have kids with varying, varying needs across the board, with every one of our kids having significant strengths. But we do need to support our students with disabilities as well as our students who have legally obligated 504 plans. So what should be happening and what is happening now is we are starting to run committee on special education meetings virtually. That will start, if it doesn't start this week, it's going to start the week after the, what was the April break. And that's really important. I talked about that last time, but we're actually getting the ball rolling with that. We're also utilizing our student services group, you know, whether it's our psychologists or our school counselors, but especially our psychologists with the 504s, because typically our psychologists are the, are the point people for 504s. They're going to be working really closely with staff and parents of kids with 504s because there's some really intricate, as you know, concepts in those 504s. Some of which we have to figure out together, and this is a collaborative decision, you know, whether we can support that or not through this virtual learning, but many of the areas we definitely can try to focus on. And the least we can do is build that communication with parents to figure out how to make it easier for your kids. And so they're not getting disadvantages, disadvantaged because of whatever's happening. And so that that 504 legal document can be supported as much as possible. We're also looking at things like telepractice and the off, the ability to offer related services online, whether that's OT, PT or speech and language. That's something that's being discussed right now that we'd love to roll out right after the April break, where we, we have the ability to use, it's a fantastic platform, telepractice, but maybe a couple of other ones. Really support some of the, some of the needs, especially with related services. So if you have a student or if your student or one of your students is a student with disabilities or a student has a 504, please, please reach out to your child's teacher, reach out to your child's counselor, reach out to any of our student services staff, they're fantastic. Reach out to your child's principal. Collaborate with our director as well as our assistant directors of special education. We need to hear from you. Everybody's different. Everybody has unique needs. So please communicate and we'll reciprocate that communication back to you so that we can really try to do what's best for your child. So that would be something that I definitely want to emphasize. So let's look at some more questions from the actual Facebook Live. Would you consider Zoom or Microsoft Teams for primary project check-ins with students? We are considering that actually. I'm not sure exactly about the, the concept of primary project. But I know that, as I said earlier, that we are really trying to focus on getting those connections between our teachers and our students tonight in a practical manner at our youngest levels. And again, whether that's once a week or a couple of times a week, whether it's 10 minutes or 20 minutes, we're going to focus on that after April break and build in those connections with teachers because I, we know your kids love their teachers and their staff. Perhaps families that need can reach out to the school for the appropriate technology. Definitely, as I said, we tried to deliver Chromebooks to people that needed them. And these were families that didn't have technology. We certainly want to know that. So reach out to us. You can either reach out to, worst case scenario, reach out to me. You know, Terranova, Terranova T@victorschools.org is the email. You can reach out to me through Facebook or a regular email, reach out to your teachers, your principal. But if you need technology, let us know and then we can try to figure out how to do that. We do have some additional Chromebooks that we're trying to prioritize for families. Is the work done at home going to be graded? Great question. So the question's going to be, when do we get back? And if we get back? So if we get back relatively early, which I would think, again, hypothetically, not even hypothetically, most likely would be the beginning of May. And I'm not saying we're going to be back the beginning of May, but I do not see us coming back in April. If we come back in May, then you're going to get more time, obviously for your kids to be in school and do work in school. We would most likely use this type of work, especially at the elementary level, to support their learning and what they've learned. But at this point, really, especially again, at that elementary level, it's about doing some work, getting some feedback on that work, practicing and not so much about the grades. Now, secondary level, again, it depends on the class and the teacher, and I would defer to our teachers and staff around that. Because we all, we do have regents courses right now where we don't know whether there's going to be a regents exam. We certainly know we have APs coming up relatively soon. Certainly those kids are preparing for the APs. And we have kids in the junior high taking high school courses. So that's really dependent on your child's teacher. Please reach out to them if you have a question. This is a point from somebody, what has really helped with time management and organization are the outlines my son's teachers send out. Things have been running smoothly at home ever since. There's a plug for outlines for our teachers. Is there a way for a senior high student to improve their third quarter grade, seeing the quarter was cut short? Again, well, one way is we're not going to penalize your child for any miswork or work they did not hand in. They will be graded on the work they handed in. And then I would defer to the prince, our principal and our, our teachers around any ways and adjustments of the third quarter grade. Again, I'm not promising that that can happen. Yeah, we do have a hold harmless clause for the third quarter where no child will fail the third quarter. But I understand that many of you are, and many of our students are concerned about their grade. So, you know, that would be a conversation you want to have with your teacher and your principal. If kids, if kids go back to school by May 1st, do you foresee spring sports continuing? Victor is doing a great job. Thanks for that plug. Again, spring sports, I know we're talking about that, both, you know, our athletic directors across the area as well as superintendents. We, this is what I would say about spring sports. We would certainly want to get spring sports back as soon as possible once we, if we get back to school. What would be key is that we make sure kids are safe. So, you know, we, we don't want is having them rush back and get injured because we rushed them back too quick. We have too many good people out there who know what they're doing to do that. But our goal would be to, as best as we can, start those spring sports if we're back early enough to do so. And we would work closely with our athletic department and our director of athletics to do that so that our kids would at least get some experience in what they should be getting right now. Especially all our kids, but I, you know, obviously we feel for our seniors who are missing their senior year. And the same goes for art and music and any performing arts clubs that were going on. I know I talked about last week, we were able to thankfully get in our incredible high school musical before this happened. But I know there's other drama events coming and going on. There's many of our musical groups that are occurring. So that's, those are things that we would want to get started as soon as possible. Let's just see here. No child will be held back because of this. Correct. I don't know if that's a statement or a question. Sounds like a statement which I completely agree with. Yeah, we're not going to, look at the one thing that I could try to take off your worry list, which is probably significant right now, is your child's not going to be punished for things they cannot control. So, you know, we're moving sixth graders to seventh grade. We're moving third graders to fourth grade. We're graduating our seniors in good standing. We're going to do whatever we would normally do to support your kids. And then we're going to do whatever we can, what every other district in the country is going to have to do, which is make sure we are smart about how we start off next year and/or how we start off the end of this spring. If we get back during, during May and June, make sure we're targeting on the most essential learning skills and the essential standards. Not focus on too many things and get your kids caught up, and they're going to get caught up. And we're going to be fine. So that's one thing you don't have to worry about. Have the schedules been finalized for next year yet? If not, then how will our children or your children get their counselors finalized? Will the child, will the counselors finalize them? We're actually working, yeah, we will be working on schedules. So we'll have more information. Again, a lot depends on when we get back. We're certainly going to have schedules for next year. We're going to have counselors' schedule for next year. We're moving forward as, as best we can for planning for next year. We're hiring staff virtually right now, both leadership staff and teachers and, and other staff members. So we're, we're, we're not stopping. We know that this is a blip. It's a significant blip and it's hardship for many of us. And certainly our number one priority is the safety of all of us, especially our kids and our, our friends and our family. But after that, we are working forward and definitely planning for next year. I hear there are concerns about video conferencing, but I think we need to give our children the benefit of the doubt. If our kiddos can learn how to play video games, they can likely learn how to manage video conferencing. I also think this is, I'm going to hit the Seymour, a life skill that all of our children are going to need to manage into their future. I have watched my second grader play interactive games with neighborhood kiddos. I don't normally love this type of interaction, but it is providing them social interaction that is needed. Excellent point. And again, this is, you know, you've heard this many times and I, I hate to repeat it over and over. We are all doing this, trying to invent this and create this on the fly. So it's not an excuse, but all of us, from your parents and guardians to our staff, to our administrators, we're trying to figure out a way to teach that's never been taught like this before. So right now incrementally, we're at that point where we're going to start to present new learning. We're going to start to really try to promote that social interaction between kids and their teachers, especially at the elementary level. We're going to expand on that at the secondary level and expand on ways to teach new learning. And then look at that over a two-week period and move forward. If we're out longer than the end of April, then certainly we need to take a look at other ways to develop lessons and video conferencing that are appropriate and that teachers are given the correct professional development in so they can support it and move forward. So these are great points that we're going to definitely consider as we invent this together for the first time. Again, a question around virtual learning. Residents need to remember all of this when it comes time to vote on the budget. Vote yes to fund these and other improvements as our district needs to support our growing community. Thank you for that comment. We'll talk more about our financial situation and our budget process. Just a quick note, as you probably heard, the budget has been moved to at least, it has to occur after June 1st, so it's no longer going to occur in May, the budget vote or the vote for Board of Education members. So that budget vote has been extended by at least two weeks. We don't know the exact date of that budget vote. It's going to be sometime after June 1st. And then the Board of Education will need to adopt a budget, which usually was, normally was adopted in April, which now will be adopted at the beginning of May. So everything's been extended at least two weeks. Hopefully we're going to get more information from the state of New York around whether it's going to be extended later or not and get a specific date. But that actually gives us more time to support, you know, you and the more important. But that actually gives us more time to support, you know, you and the more important needs right now, which is safety and family, community and school. And trying to work collaboratively to educate your kids. But then move into another really critical conversation that you've already heard, which is how are we going to support the district financially? And balance the needs of our community that, as every community is right now, that's hurting right now. So we're going to have those conversations moving forward, um, and make sure that we're transparent around those. Uh, my son's 504 is basic and he is struggling at home. Any extra guidance would be appreciated. Uh, I, I would ask that you reach out to your child's teacher. Um, and if you're struggling with getting ahold of your child's teacher, either your scout, child's school counselor or your child's principal, we will, our, our staff is bending over backwards for all of you. And um, you know, I'm so proud of uh, working in this district, not just with our staff, but with this community that has embraced this challenging, crazy time. And so uh, reach out to the people that are closest to your child. We will do whatever it takes to try to support your child, especially their emotional and social, emotional and mental support, mental health support. Um, so if your child's struggling, reach out. Uh, you know, our teachers are reaching out as well, but stay connected. That's the biggest thing. We don't want to hear about people who are struggling and then not being able to connect. We want you to connect. Are you working on ways for kids who reply on math or science lab in high school to connect with those teachers? Or should we be working that out individually? We're actually working on ways, um, we are taking a look, our science and math teachers are taking a look at the lab situation. We'll have more information shortly on that. Um, I definitely think, again, if, if, trying to understand the question. If the question is whether you should connect with your child's teacher, connect with your child's teacher. It's definitely important. Um, but I know that our science and math, especially science labs, we're trying to figure that out. We have not been given guidance at this moment that I know of from the state around lab. So again, we need some guidance from them to support. Um, is there a possibility that the junior prom can be rescheduled instead of canceled? Great question. Not sure yet. I didn't want to, I didn't want to say rescheduled and then have to say it's canceled a month later. Um, there is possibilities for anything. The last thing we want to do is um, take away incredible uh, experiences for your kids. It's not what we're in the business for. So if we can reschedule the junior prom, we would. Again, there's so many variables right now, for example. Reschedule it for June at some point. But depending on if we come back in May or June, and depending on the regulations on, you know, social distancing and crowds, that would have a big, uh, big impact on whether we can reschedule the junior prom or not. So we're going to have to wait and see on that. I'm not going to promise we're going to be able to. But I will tell you that we will look into it and do whatever we can to try to make it right. Other states like Pennsylvania are requiring that attendance be tracked. How is VCS addressing that? Is that a requirement of New York State? Currently from my understanding, it's not a requirement, um, that I know of. Again, I've been wrong many times. Um, we are not at this point, um, taking attendance on who's uh, participating in the schoolwork. Um, we are keeping track of who's participating. We are reaching out to uh, parents and students of kids who we're not hearing from over a couple of days uh, or a week. Um, I will say this, I just talked to the high school principal, Mr. Siesto, and he made a comment to me that the incre, the vast, vast majority of students at the high school are um, interacting with their teachers and getting the work done, which is significant. The number of kids that are not being responsive are incredibly small. And our staff and counselors are reaching out to them. But in terms of requirement for attendance, um, for virtual learning, we do not have that at that, this time. Zoom is an app available for smartphones and tablets too. It isn't exclusive to computers. True. The phone number can be called on a landline as well to be involved in the classroom. Good point. If we don't know about regions exams, should we just plan that we will somehow have to take them so that these kids are prepared? Uh, I would plan, okay, so let me say this. I would continue to work closely with your child's teacher to plan for the uh, you know, learning the region's curriculum. I mean, that's what we should be doing right now. So if I'm in the region's uh, biology, I'm learning biology, I'm still getting new learning as well as review. I'm planning on taking that exam unless they tell me it's not going to be offered. Don't assume it's not going to be offered and not do the work. That would be the worst thing. If you have questions around the work or you're confused by the work, that's where you have that connection with your teacher to reach out to him or her. Try to get that support, which I know our teachers are bending over backwards to do. So, um, again, plan for it. Uh, I don't know if we're going to have it. As soon as we know, we will let people know. Have you considered holding these meetings for each building so we can zone in on needs and what's working? What a great idea. Something I'll definitely talk about with the principals. It's certainly the, you know, any way that we can communicate with you in these uncertain times, we're going to try to do. So that's a great idea. Something we're going to consider. Um, we've got about four minutes till 7:30. So what's going on with the budget vote? And are we still considering 11% tax increase? Um, again, as I mentioned with the budget vote, the budget vote's been delayed. It's been delayed till at least after June 1st. That means everything is delayed at least two weeks, including the board's adoption of the budget. Um, the board is considering everything at this point. And the two major factors are the needs of this district moving forward and how to best support Vector, knowing our financial constraints and our serious financial situation that we're in in relation to these drastic times where people are losing jobs. Community is in a financial stress and trying to make sure we understand the needs of the community. That's going to take some discussion and because the state moved the budget vote to a later date, it allows for some of that discussion. I will tell you that it's going to be a transparent discussion. The board is focused on making sure the community is a part of that. And uh, we'll be definitely having different venues to have those communications. Couple more questions. Will parent orientation for current sixth graders going to be seventh graders next year be rescheduled? Uh, not sure if it's going to be rescheduled. It's certainly going to be done somehow. You know, whether that's in the spring or whether it's in the summer, I don't know the exact way it will be done. I don't know the exact date. But it depends on when we get back to school, if we get back to school this year. I will promise you though, as superintendent, that we will have your sixth graders as prepared as possible for entering seventh grade. And that concerns that they have and anxiety they have about going to the junior high school, which is normal. Just like our eighth graders have anxiety about going to the high school in every district and every school in the country. Uh, we're going to alleviate those, that anxiety and make sure we're communicating with you and supporting you in those, whatever way we can. I just don't have a specific date right now. Again, I'm going to get to more questions over the next couple of days. We're going to answer them as best we can and we'll put those answers right on Facebook. A couple wrap-up comments here. Again, I'm really interested in uh, student group chats and student Facebook Live. So that's something I'm, uh, if you're, some of your students are out there listening, I'd love to get your feedback in the next couple of days. Email me, uh, let me know, um, what you think because I love to set up some student chat groups. Uh, I want to thank the community again for your incredible participation and interest in this. You're phenomenal. Know things are difficult. Um, know you're not getting all the answers you need and know that things aren't always going as smoothly as you'd like. Uh, we feel the same way. We're all in this together and we're going to continue to communicate with you and try to make things as best as they can. Um, we're here for you. We're going to continue to provide updates on a weekly basis. I'll definitely have a district-wide town hall every week. For those of you that are interested, continue to communicate with you via robocall on Fridays and any other time uh, that something changes, we're going to definitely let you know. I know our staff's doing an incredible job communicating with you. Um, and um, just continue to do that, get you the information, even if we don't have all the answers that we can. Um, also thank you to the Board of Education for their continued work behind the scenes. You don't necessarily see them, but they are very focused on uh, 4,300 and some odd students and over 750 staff's wellbeing. And uh, moving forward, they're looking at both short-term and long-term goals. Uh, so I appreciate all the work that the seven individuals are doing. Will you stay healthy? Reminder to our students, social distancing, wash your hands. Don't get in groups. Stay off campus, even though we'd love to have you. We will have you as soon as we can. But keep off the campus. I know it's tough, but talk to each other virtually, but not face to face. Reminder to set goals, keep a routine, continue to focus on time management where you can, work together with your parents and guardians. Social, uh, emotional health, mental health, physical health. Remember those things. Fight isolation. If you're feeling isolated, talk to people. Reach out to people. They're going to be there for you. Um, we're going to get through this together and if you have more questions or concerns, just let me know. Have a good evening and uh, really appreciated our conversation tonight. Thank you very much.